...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and with God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Call a meeting to order for motions of agenda approval, nothing changed there?
Um, I'd like to add, accept and place on file the post-election audit report from the primary election.
Okay. I will...
I'll make that motion with the amendment that Peggy just mentioned.
I will second the amended. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. And approved. Minutes from last week's meeting.
I look through, they all look good, so I would make the motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. That's approved. Any general public concerns? Is that generally the public, from what I see here? Anything on, uh, Zoom? Oh, there's Kent. Anybody pass Kent, uh, on the duty call? Any call?
Going ones?
Sold. No general public concerns. Alright. All right, on time for Ben. Thank God to God here, prior, you've been a story, a little transportation this morning.
I've got a couple of applications to work in the right way to approve. The first is to Alex Nelson to apply his own dust control for his residence over by Redwood. Um, I talked to him last week, it's not like he's going to get product from Pro Co-op. He can just apply it himself.
Really? Huh. Okay. Sounds like a messy job.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if it's because of the distance, if the price from Pro is more expensive than just buying Kent's homes or down itself, but he's got us through insurance.
So will he do the same that, uh, other people do? He'll market so the blade operator knows?
Yeah, he's gonna use the tree sap or the lip, so it's dark brown, very noticeable color.
Well, I'll make a motion for approval of the app to work in Riley for Alex Nelson.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Approved.
The second application that I have is for Mid-American Energy to install the new, new pole and guy wire on one hundred and tenth street between Utah and Virginia. Kent Givers is planning on putting a bin site in. Uh, David's at roughly the half mile line between the two. And he needs to get power across the road.
So will they put the power on, uh, they'll bring it across and put a pole in, or they'll...
Yeah, so they've gotta, they've gotta move the, the pole on the south side so that they can put a, a guy wire behind it to brace.
Yeah, I didn't know if they'd board that.
I'm surprised you just didn't go underground.
That's what I thought.
It would've been nice.
Probably more money, isn't it?
Yeah.
They have to pay for that.
Less chance of ripping it down.
Yeah. Let's say a new pole before the collar hole.
Yeah, it would've been nice, I mean, it's like before football, like you said, so the wires.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Both.
Uh, the last application that I have is for D and M drainage and at, uh, Clint Miller's place. Right now, the county's got a ten or twelve inch intake out there in the ditch right now, and when he gets the water coming through this property, it's enough water that boils up out of the intake and runs out through his field. And Doug Marso has worked with him in the past, put a new eighteen inch main down this property. And he wants to put basically like a, an eighteen inch sewer drain. And he's gonna do it just inside of this property, and I'll let my intake place a little bit of rickrack around, excuse me, around the sewer intake.
Well, sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. I'll make that motion quickly.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry on.
The last item that I have is to accept the retirement of Steve Billy effective the twenty-fifth. It's due from this coming Thursday. Because they're on four-ten, they don't work Fridays, so.
What if we don't? You come back to work Monday?
I said, I don't want to accept it. I said, you don't give me any headaches, you're good employees.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking, is it coming though?
Uh, he's been sitting quite a while, and he's been with the county for twenty years.
But he's too young to retire.
That's kinda what I thought.
He turned sixty-two on, uh...
He carried sixty-two longer.
He turned sixty-two on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, so. He, uh, that was always kind of his goal, I guess.
I had a question here, Mike Nelson, I knew that he was telling us. Um, what's regret? I'm gonna go to Steve's.
With the two weeks, that if he thinks about it and the hours and that he could possibly re-change his mind, you wanna put that in on that?
I, I could just, I could go back and tell him before he did accept the retirement.
Anyone can jagger.
I would second it.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Regretfully passed.
And would you get us a copy of that written presentation, please? We have always put those on our personal files. Thank you.
So where does that put us then? Are we...
Uh, we'll be one shy. We'll be one shy, so I'll, I'll post a position opening in the other shops if anybody wants to transfer. You have to do that for either one or two weeks after the meeting. And then, I don't assume anybody's gonna move. Uh, after that, then we can post it in the paper and on the radio as I air it. Start that process.
Do they normally post in the shop they leave and then go to the other shops?
We used to, uh, back when we had blade operators, truck drivers, foremen. We eliminated all of those postings, and now it's basically, you're either a foreman or a laborer.
Oh, okay.
So, um, the way, the way this one's shaping up is Steve's gonna retire, Mike Mayall's moving to Steve's route, Mike Whitehead is taking Steve's blade and starting Mike Mayall's route, and then what we'll be hiring is, uh, a wintertime snowplow truck driver, but otherwise a laborer.
Yeah. Okay, we'll have plenty of time, hopefully, before the snow flies.
Yeah. Yeah.
How is the bridge coming? Haven't been up there for a while.
So Wednesday, we poured, uh, the pier cap, the last pier cap and the above cap. Um, they want Dave to break a beam this morning for, uh, strength concrete so that they can start setting their beams and their decking and start placing deck steel. They're, they're moving along pretty well.
Yeah. Not affect good weather.
I'm hopeful by middle of next month, everything's fine.
Wow, be awesome.
We'll have all your work and guard rail.
It's good.
I was asked a question, and I wondered if you could answer it.
Okay.
If a farmer wanted to blacktop his road, say a half a mile off of the blacktop now, and he's willing to pay for it, would the county go along with that?
Is it private road?
Nope, county road. He'd like the blacktop up to his drive.
There's a paving point requirements, uh, for any kind of new asphalt, we can't maintain the two-hundred-and-fifteen miles that we've got. And I, I mean, he can make that formal request with me, and I can switch the numbers in, but my gut shot answers no.
But the road, the partial road is on the five-year plan, and he was wondering about if we'd wear it in, by the way, that mile to his drive.
Oh, you're talking drag strip. That's a crap road, you know, but I'm just trying to put a Band-Aid on top of it, and it breaks apart, and, yeah. We've slowly been pulling away the, the layers of steel coat over the years. I think, uh, right now, we've got it so that the hard surface goes as far as the business, um, lawn care business, and it goes past the drag strip.
Yeah.
Um, I talked to the old, old engineer, Paul Cleveland, years ago, the reason that thing got sealed coated is because the county was tired of paying for dust control on that road back. That's the only reason it ever got it sealed coated. That and the ski lodge was up there.
Yeah.
So there was more businesses on that road.
Three bridges there, now you only got one.
Yeah, now you've got the one.
And, relatively seasonal.
I, I don't think it'll hold up. I mean, the frost boils that happened from Johnson's place and bear hunters and all the way up to, uh, Mayalls and, um, I can make sure, but I can't think of the outside.
Snarebys?
No, uh, not, Jenkins.
Jenkins?
Uh, you get quite a few frost boils after winter, especially in front of Johnson's house and, and bear hunters.
I would just ask, I'll find out.
Plus those heavy trucks going in and out of it, cattle.
That you were talking about.
Mm-hmm. I just don't think it'll hold it.
They live on the blacktop E drive.
Yeah, I don't think it would hold up. I don't think it'd be throwing good money at that.
Okay. Well, I would just ask, well, it's permanent, I didn't know.
You have anything else?
I do not. Do you have anything else?
Do you have anything else? Oh, Kent Givers on this, uh, grain bin. I, I haven't seen anything on, from, uh, Randy Clark.
I sent him an email last Thursday, uh, I didn't have a chance to read it before I came in, but he's responded.
Just message to him that he's got a building permit for that bin.
Yeah, I just asked, I said, does he have a building permit, and what's his plant height for the bins, and what's his, uh...
Just so I don't get it so too close to the road and so.
What's the plant going out in Colorado and two thirty?
What's the what?
Yeah, plant. We got a great big building out here on the northwest corner.
Colorado and two thirty? Isn't that where the substation's at?
No, it's just north of Lawrence Davis, the intersection across the road.
Boy, I haven't seen it.
They've got a hellacious building right up out there. They said it was a hip plant.
Nice. I, I've heard rumors about a couple of guys that have been renting eighties, and their plan is to plant what is on.
What, ten acres for Andy Davis, and they're putting a big building up. Let me check it out.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, I haven't heard nothing about it.
I don't.
I didn't hear anything until Saturday, and I went to...
I don't always see building permits from random.
I was down in Tennessee last summer, and I thought, oh, look at that Christmas tree farm. It was him. I drove up and looked at it, I mean, they were the size of Christmas trees. And had plastic down and irrigation tubes, and, you know, probably five...
Like fences around it?
Yeah. But they had, you know, just small patches, six to ten acre patches, they were. But from a distance, it looked like a Christmas tree farm.
Todd called me on that, um, what is it, Claire and Seaport nine, the blacktop, put the, um, Jake Bright sign on. He just, he appreciates it very much, and if somebody noticed the difference.
Okay, good.
I noticed it the other day when I went through, their signs are up.
Yeah, he called me and said, it's been great. Hopefully it gets up.
I also visited with Nick Bowden over there, he said they did set the, uh, when they did that over there along the gravel road, he said they made the measurements and then they set their pile over there, and he said it's, he thinks it's plenty far.
Far enough away.
Yeah, but I guess if you're out in that area, you might just look at it and...
Were you still looking at maybe, maybe buying that?
I haven't got ahold of Dean to see if they did buy one yet, or, so.
Just let me know.
Alright.
Pretty well engineered out?
Think so.
Is Denise joining us via Zoom?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or telephone, one or the other.
Okay, that's fine. Um, well, would you like to just move down, uh, and, uh, discuss the, uh, the opening of the courthouse and the wearing of face coverings? For the topic of discussion.
Originally, you guys had said the fifteenth, this is the fifteenth, so I'm checking with you and seeing if you want to go with that, or what's your wish in life?
Uh, I had Peggy give us all a copy of this from ISAC, uh, from the judicial branch, the courthouse, and, um, some of the stuff they had. So, it's, I guess it's up to us to open it the way we want it. They've got some guidelines here, go by.
Were we able to find the sprayer?
Dave was looking, brought us into it.
He's been working on it.
And brought us into some information this morning.
He's been looking through the marine department.
He found one somewhere that he can order, that's quite a bit cheaper to, not battery operated, it's corded, but it's like a hundred and thirty bucks.
So a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
You could buy like five and six of them.
Well, not everybody, but most of the people that would have the direct impact on are sitting right here. Treasurer, quarter, auditor, that's where I'd like to see your thoughts on this, all this protocol. You're the ones who get this out of here. You're the ones who deal with it.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we don't have a lot of counter traffic in the quarters office. I mean, we've only had one since we started this that was in the parking lot, we couldn't take care of, couldn't be hit me. Um, so, you know, doesn't back our home a lot. Do I like door locks and appointments? Yeah. I, but...
Open it up the way we closed it, right?
I mean, it's scary when you look at Arnold Park, and they loosen up, and then they tighten up again, and, you know, I like the guy who's taken it gradually and waiting out, but you can't wait out for it forever. It's more of a gamble. You have a lot more pleasure than you do.
It's one of the rules in all that are open now.
We'll probably keep driver's license by appointment, just because it keeps it run smoother that way, but we're, we're showing up time for walk-ins, but she's keeping it pretty busy with her appointments. Our office, our motor vehicle tax at the time of year, there's much tax issue, but the motor vehicle is, you guys take walk-ins, but we have to have sign, I have two signs about physicality and seeing three people in the office, that kind of thing. Hopefully, everybody'd be adult about it and sleep themselves according rooms.
I think most people are pretty courteous about it, it seems like when you're out and about.
We don't have, arguably, yeah, but it's a grocery store, we have people running in there all the time, like, you guys know what six feet is?
The baddest weekend on a grocery shop, I couldn't believe it.
My question is, Janet, when you, when we get to that point of if the door is unlocked, and you walk up to the door and look in, there's three people standing in there, do they know enough to say, we don't want five people standing in here?
If we don't redesign next to the door, I'm gonna not have any signs on the door so they can see, and next to it on the wall there, hopefully they'll use those chairs and wait, and if they don't, we're gonna, those counters, we're just gonna tell them we need to wait the hall.
Yeah.
And so, and hopefully they'll know their order, we're not gonna monitor the order of how they move in.
Well, that's the whole thing, I guess I had one person tell me over the weekend, well, when are we gonna open things up? I went to the courthouse, I had an appointment, I didn't have the right thing signed, so then I had to leave, and I had to come back, it's like, okay, you still have to do it in tougher steps of, and I'd be the same way, you know? I wanted to get my license today, but I haven't, my ten ninety permit paid for in July yet, so I can't come up here, but, you know, you gotta do it the way the government says you gotta do it, so.
Tom was getting the appointment back, he couldn't just come right back, possibly, not immediately.
What do you guys feel about face covering? Do you want that extra protection? I'm not sold on it. You still tell everybody we recommend it, our face covering, and I say fifty-fifty. We put it on when we need it at the door, 'cause we're closer than six feet from the door.
Yeah.
Um, but then we get behind our plexiglass, that's where it's aligned.
Actually, the last protects you, or protects them from you, you know, it goes the other way, so.
He can read any article he wants, the whole thing.
That's the amazing part about this, that every day, it's gotten different change and different interpretation of this and that, so you really don't have a clue, and I don't think anybody else has a clue either.
And the other thing is, they're talking...
Other than laundry soap in your basement, order pizza for the rest of your life.
And they're talking about this September, uh, from August to, towards the end of September, this thing's going to come right back. It isn't, the numbers haven't dropped off because summer is, it's up like it would, so, I mean, then you turn to another station, and they're telling you, oh, we haven't had any spikes for, who do you believe?
Peggy, what's, uh, do you think the auditor's office?
Um, now that we have election over, things have calmed down for us, or, well, for a while anyway, until September, when we have another election, but I did make up just a couple more mock notices to put on the door for you guys to see. I know driver's license has an additional number on there. Um, we did give these to each of the offices that wanted one, um, they could put them in their window, or on the counter, wherever they wanted to. Um, we've got these to put on the floors, any office that wants to use them has got some of these to put around, to keep people social, this thing, we probably should put some down the hallway also. Um, as far as bathrooms, I think I would like to see bathrooms roped off, so that Dave doesn't have to do extensive cleaning on those when we first reopen. Um, that's how we had it when we locked down, firstly, shut the doors and locked off certain areas, and then...
Have you seen that?
So I'd like to see, no, nobody's seen it yet. I was just showing the board first?
Oh, go ahead, pass them around then. Well, we're not here so often as they are, but that's...
Well, we're getting your approval for this, so that's why you're seeing it first.
This is basically like your little yellow sign there, something with the full numbers on it.
Yeah, and we're free to add stuff to that, or take the stuff off of that, if any of you guys have suggestions of things to add. I know the treasurer's office has two different numbers, and I didn't put your additional number on there, I need to add that, um, but if there's other things you want on there or...
Never got Diane's cell number on here, you need to write that in.
I'll leave for a week, so.
You can take them while you're at the wedding, you know.
The thing I don't understand, also, when you talk about sites, it's like, hey, we're handling their papers, their money, their checks, everything instantly. I think it's all about cleanliness and hygiene and protecting.
When they leave, what is it, your man presents?
Yeah, right. You know, that would be a choice of every individual, whether they wanna wear rubber gloves, you know, things like that, those are, I mean, I think that should be an option for them. We have sanitizer on both sides of the counter now.
Oh, the little squeeze button?
Yeah.
That's where our customers usually make sure themselves, 'cause they're not used to the water, it's really kinda cold.
Well, the only people that I've heard is for your office, because you have the most traffic, Janet, with licenses and people trying to get...
Registrations.
Registration, and, uh, young kid that wants to get his license or get his permit, he has...
Turn sixteen, he'll be there, I want that license.
You know?
Those, I think, will stay appointments for a while, the driver's license.
I, I think that...
And if we can't, if adults can't monitor themselves in the hallway, we might have to revert back to appointment only with the door, just like, you know, with the try, but if it can't work, it can't work.
Yeah, I don't know if I could get her license.
She gets our bulk customers in there, you know, when you're doing our bulk...
Yeah, it'd be two months out before we get you in. And, you know, she's sixteen, she called up here, I won't get you in next week. I didn't get her license, she could have yourself.
Yeah.
Well, you remember sixteen, I wanted my license an hour after you turned sixteen, so, every kid is that way, and I guess, but we just have to do what we have to do, so...
The state has added online services, so that helps too with, um, at increasing the options for driver's license, um, you can get extensions for those that are firing at the end of the month, and, Dave has to be in, have in mind that, that the proclamation is not extended.
I would suggest that we don't open it up, we leave it set as is until Dave gets sprayers and stuff, and then open it up, the main door, that way he gets sprayers, he can spray the halls.
I still think we should, we do that, but if Janet knows she's got three people out in the hall, or any of the other offices, it still works better to know that we have people that are either coming, or, I mean, I'm not saying you have to have an appointment for the rest of our days, but it sure knows that we got four people coming for driver's license, we wanna keep moving them people as fast as we can with good service.
When does Dave think he's gonna have those sprayers?
I don't know, we, we, did he order that one? No, he just saw it.
He just came right up to show it.
And he told him to get it ordered.
But he doesn't know availability. Yeah, he don't know. Yeah, we asked him, he checked on it, he hasn't checked. It's just a, a corded electrostatic sprayer, larger thing, reasonable price, and it, he suggested that for, you know, courtrooms and such, and getting around, and it's just a lot quicker, so, we don't know yet, but. I have a question, has there been any major issues with appointment only for everything? I mean...
It's, uh, since you can only do like one every half hour, that limits your customer groups, I, in a day's time, um, I had one person that went down to let her in, she got her cell phone, and waited about three minutes, and said, you're too busy to come to the door, she missed her appointment, so those kinds of things are frustrating, and with one other, you know, we have people, but...
We have them lined up in the hallway, which we probably won in our office, but we may not clean the counter between each customer, you know, now with the spread out of appointments, we easily can do that, but, you know.
If people are just coming in, you might not be able to get to the counters for it.
Well, I just was wondering if it really has caused, you know, really undue, uh, issues for the public, I mean, they have to, like you said, be at all, and, and even if it is open, it's limited personnel going, you know, people going in and out, that's all, I, I just, that was, you know, if it's really been any major issue.
The more so this past week was that customers thought we were open, like, we had kind of, I had said that we're gonna consider it on the eighth, and then I... Like, we had kind of, I had said that we were gonna consider it on the eighth, and then, you know, their bathrooms, and then they show up the week of the eighth, and they find in. Um, then we were able to work a lot of them in, but a lot of them we don't, um...
Well, if it's six weeks out from this electrostatic sprayer?
Right, a lot of people are gonna wait that long.
I just want to see when my license expires, 'cause when I knew it, I was gonna have to be mad. I got a few years yet.
I guess it would be up to you. You're the ones that's gotta be infected, so... Whatever you're, you wanna...
We handled it before without sprayers.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think, I think we're fine. I think we should open the doors back up. That's, that's my thoughts. Everything else, we're all bringing back up.
Yeah, yeah.
We can roll out whatever, yes, we don't want them to go to...
I was gonna say, do we still have the ability to do that? To control the crowd and say, if there's four people in the, trying to get in there?
To lighten Dave's workload at least.
We don't, we don't want that many people in here that's set out...
Outside.
Outside. I mean, that should be just common sense.
I'm not sure how you're gonna do that.
Well, that'd have to be voluntary, I'm sure, yeah.
We're gonna have to believe...
Well, the six-foot guidelines would say that you can't have more than so many people in there.
And then, we're gonna put the chairs at, everything, is it on this north wall? So they can see the office and not see anything.
Yeah, move everyone out of the counter a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, that, to me, is just common sense. If you look into, walk down the hall and look into your office, there's three people standing in there. They're already borderline inside the six-foot area.
Right.
Wouldn't they be?
Yes.
Does that counter, you know, be right against the printer, about one in the middle and one against this door on the north?
I would submit the recommendation, though, for face covering, I mean, because it, you know, that would protect the staff a little bit more. I mean, they're saying that it keeps the drop hooks in.
Well, it also keeps it, uh, the handles and everything else in there, coughing and whatever.
Right.
Denise, are you on the line?
Yeah, yes, I am.
Okay, forward with you.
I don't keep it in joint, so you might have a problem.
Okay, we'll be just a couple minutes then.
Well, if anyone wanna put something in the form of a motion, if you hide, like to handle this?
Open the door, leave the page office. I'll second that.
Um, are we gonna rip off the bathrooms like we did on the closing for a week? Or so?
I think so. I think we need those roped off.
Yeah, just a question on the face coverings, and that's always a contentious thing, is it...
I, I would say it's the recommendation. It would be a recommendation for face covering.
Just put a sign on the door, "Face covering recommended." I'm gonna do that, I'm sure, just put it on the door.
I think that, sign of the questions too, that just say, we hold up your temperature, heating, or whatever, to please not come in.
Okay, we've got if you have a fever or...
Yeah, just have that. Grow that one in. Have that posted on the front door, what happens on...
Yeah, I mean, that's all that's left.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Well, do we have a second from Sandy's motion?
Dave did.
That's a nice one. Where'd you get this from?
Is there any further discussion then on that motion?
And then if this doesn't work, we can revert back.
I'll do it, absolutely.
Of the individual offices, if you wanna lock the doors or not.
Okay.
Any further, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? To the shot.
Okay, I will shoot for noon today, 'cause we gotta have time to go in and program the door locks and stuff, so...
Eleven tomorrow, we're flying to...
Let Dave know.
We do have a few appointments, but some of those that are, how appointments will run or down, we're not gonna...
Yeah.
All right, sorry, Denise?
Yes?
Hello? Sorry, thank you for your patience.
Maybe you can hear better if she's up there now. Okay. You can see her pictures there.
So, we have Denise Ballard, uh, who's going to give us, I guess, kind of a, uh, information really on the Medicare, uh, group supplement benefit, if you would. Please, Denise?
So, at the annual IGHCP meeting, Zach, in February, we had a presentation from a Walmart Medicare specialist who was able to come into IGHCP and offer a group benefit for any existing or new IGHCP member group. This Medicare product, again, it's like at the group level, Walmart administers it. They do all the premium retention and, um, sufficient forms. So, really, if Humboldt County wants to participate in it, it allows, uh, an easy transition from health insurance, employer-paid health insurance, to a Medicare stuff when they, when they retire. It's just that the value adds, there's no cost for Humboldt County or administration involved. So, I don't know if, um, I know Peggy, you've heard the presentation a couple of times. I, has the supervisors seen all of that material?
They have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of them.
Okay, the one that Cory ran?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So, did you, I don't have that in front of me, but, um, because that's Cory's PowerPoint, but if you, um, if you kind of look through those slides, you'll see that it's just offering the Medicare supplement policies to your employees as they transition out. Um, it's a value-add service. It's really just to avoid those employees coming to the auditor's office and somebody there at Humboldt County asking for advice as it relates to Medicare stuff and Medicare. Uh, very technical questions. Um, there's a very specific window when eligible retirees can't go, you know, can sign up for Medicare. So, um, rather than those employees come to someone like myself, who doesn't work in the Medicare market, um, or someone like Peggy's office, just not armed with the right material. Again, this is a value-add from Walmart, uh, to those retiring employees and their spouses.
Denise, um, say somebody resigns before they're sixty-five and they take the Cobra, would this be available after the, um, they turn sixty-five?
Yes, it would be available after their Cobra expires, correct.
Okay, that's a good thing to know.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it truly doesn't have, um, you know, I guess Humboldt County doesn't, you know, you're not really involved in it. It's just a, a value-add that we're more, we're more gonna kind of step back. I'm gonna step back, you're gonna step back, and just create kind of an open dialogue immediately as your employees start thinking about retirement with Walmart, so that they can transition into Medicare Part A and Part B, and they'll help them through that process. And then, once they enroll in Medicare Part A and Part B, they'll have a plethora of supplement options that are available to them with a Medicare specialist helping them through that. You know, it works for Walmart and specializes in Medicare.
Looks pretty good, Denise.
There is an application process, um, so if you have a retiree that wants to sign up, there's an application process, but again, you're not directly involved in that. I'm not directly involved in that, um, that those conversations will happen, happen with your retiring employees at Walmart. They, of course, know who your retiring employees are. They, they have a list of your employees. They know when they're supposed to turn sixty-five. So all of the outreach, all of the meetings will go directly from Walmart to that employee. Um, if the employee doesn't wanna participate, they just say, you know, "No, thank you. We don't, you know, I just, that's just paid. I'm gonna do Medicare with, you know, I have a private advisor."
Someone else, you know?
And then certainly Walmart will, will back off. It's, it's just for, um, you know, for those people that have questions. It is kind of a difficult and confusing transition from, you know, all your employer pay and, um, and, you know, the benefits, where somebody else can kind of help take care of those for you. Now you have to make these decisions on which plan makes the most sense. And I am not Medicare-trained, so, you know, sometimes they come to me, and I try to get them to a local agent. I, um, so again, just, just an additional report.
And just to reiterate again, there is no cost to the county or admin fees or anything?
Nope, no, no cost. You, um, you, the most you would ever have to do is maybe help facilitate with a packet to an employee. Um, but really, I, I'm just, Peggy, I'm not really involved either. It's, it's a direct relationship between Walmart, the Walmart representative, and your retiring employee.
Okay.
Got a question. Um, by accepting this, basically, we're just giving Blue Cross, Blue Shield the foot in the door to get whoever they can before they go to some other private person.
Yes. Yeah, that's the way I did it.
Yeah, that's what I do too.
I mean...
It's a market, marketing.
Yes.
They have nothing to lose. I mean, they're, you know, they usually get about eighty percent of the market anyway. Um, now, there was a thing that, uh, there is Medicare, I believe, Part F, that your employees would be able to get by virtue of the IGHCP sponsorship that they couldn't get if you chose not to let your employees participate in this. So there is a supplement, it's no longer available in the open market, but if you have the group protection, like this, the IGHCP board approved, um, then you have access to this, to this policy that is no longer available. So that's a, that's a pretty...
That's the benefit, okay.
Yeah. And it's just eas, easy to...
Easier.
Again, so your employees are used to either, you know, stopping in the auditor's office or reaching out to me or somebody from my team. And this is kind of a stopgap. I mean, because when they, when they come to me with Medicare questions, I, I, you know, I, I've had family members that have bought on Medicare, and I don't handle it for them. I mean, I'm just not, uh, I just don't work in that area. It's very specific, um, and again, there's very specific timeframe. So I don't wanna do them a disservice, because I don't feel I'm, I'm equipped to handle Medicare questions. So, again, I tried to circle them back to a local agent, which is not easy. I mean, just not a lot of people that work in that market. Um, so if you have, let's say, an employee and they, you know, they, they know, "I am planning on enrolling with United Healthcare," I've already been talking to my agent about it, Walmart says, "Okay." You know, I mean, if, if your employee indicates they have interest, Walmart will engage. If they don't, they don't.
Yeah.
Just an option.
Yeah, and, you know, like you say, if it does, if there's a little bit of a benefit to it, I think that we should have allowed our employees to get that benefit.
Agreed.
Believe me, we get plenty of calls to sign up for Medicare.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Must be a lot of money in it, 'cause they sure advertise.
Yeah.
After you tell a hundred of them to take you off their list, and a month later, it starts all over again.
Yeah, yeah.
You throw it work all day.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it gets confusing. I, I looked at it myself, and I, I, that's tough, because again, they're, they're used to having a resource when it comes to questions about their health insurance, and then all of a sudden, they don't have anybody.
Right.
Peggy, can we even make a motion to approve this?
Yes.
Okay, I would make that motion to approve, uh, a group supplemental Medicare program.
I'll, I'll second Sandy's motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Supplement it is.
Thank you so much, Denise.
Thanks, Denise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
All right.
Didn't take her long to shut us off.
Need enough of us. Well, how about, uh, should we, is this a good time for post-election results?
You bet.
To get that out of the way, so we don't...
Um, the Secretary of State's office, after the election, for each county, pulled, maybe like a drawing, you know, they pick out of, of whatever hat or bowl or a box or whatever, whatever office each county is supposed to audit, and whatever precinct. Um, we were chosen for absentee. We had twelve hundred and, let me look back. Twelve hundred and fifty-three absentee ballots cast. So, um, we only had to count half of those. There are rules on absentee, or you only have to count half. So you pull out half of them, um, we, me and my staff counted them out in their presence, said, "Here's six hundred and twenty-seven." To you, you guys start putting them through the machine. We had a TM coded, so they could do that, and they didn't have to hand-count those. But after they're done, then they have to pull them out of the box and hand-count them. They have to sort them by party, and then sort them by candidate within that party. And then just double-check our numbers to make sure that what was recorded on the machine matches what was on, to make sure that it was, uh, programmed correctly for election night. So they went through all that, um, the totals matched up. Um, there were a few that we were off by like two. And then they found out that going through and looking, anything that was unusual, they're supposed to set off the side. One person had one that had an X marked in the box, and two people had ones that had check marks.
Oh.
And they determined that check marks must not have counted, because it wasn't dark enough, didn't cover the oval enough, the X would've. So then that made it match exactly.
Perfect.
So, um, everything is done. We're very pleased that it came out, that everything matched fine. They had a special audit board. It consisted of Jeff Harklaw, Kathy X, Marianne Johnson, Cela Sworn, and Andy Myl. So, they did a great job.
So they got extra work for the election?
Yeah.
Thanks to the state.
So, according to the rules from the Secretary of State, we have to have this accepted and placed on file by the supervisors.
All right, I'll make the motion to accept and place on file the election audit report.
The first and the second, any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, audit report passes. Sign anything on that, Peggy?
I don't know. There actually isn't anything to sign, just accept and place it on file.
Excellent. Okay. Um, now we have, uh, discussion and possible act on the solution, support contracts for the upcoming fiscal year.
You would ask me to check on this, 'cause they were asking for counties that they wanted to do a five-year contract versus a one-year, and you were asking one of the benefits. Um, there's really no big benefit. I mean, you don't get a price reduction, but your price is locked in and stays the same.
That usually...
So at least for five years, your price would be locked in.
Yeah.
Where other people may do a one-year contract, and then it'll go up next year, and go up the next year, and it'll be... So if it does go up, we get the benefit of not having to pay more if we go with the five-year contract. And that was the only change, they said. Just an option they were throwing out for counties, if they wanted to not have to worry about it for a lot of...
And just to re-ask the question, we've been with solutions for a long time, so it isn't like we're, we're jumping from someone that we just started with last year to a five-year contract.
Right, and we've been very happy.
Very happy, yeah. I've heard some horror stories from a few of the other counties that are doing the other offered product, and these guys do really good.
Well, with you...
Love and beyond.
With you leaving in the end of the year, would your recommendation to us that you're satisfied enough with the way things run?
Would you want to...
Would you go for five, or would you be recommending...
I, I would not question them with five-year contracts at all.
You don't wanna pay our IT support for the next five years.
I think my office wants to do IT support.
I think they've been a good company, and it was treated as decent, so we'll go with a five-year contract.
Is it just, how often is that paid with that contract?
You still get billed yearly?
So it's still a yearly payment, but you signed an agreement...
But there just won't be any increase in that, yeah.
Good question. All right, I'll second Dave's motion.
That was my only question. Any further discussion?
It's a good question to ask.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both, five-year contract.
Okay.
Excellent. Uh, we have Cost Advisory Services Incorporated contract.
Cost Advisory Services, I showed you this last week. They are also asking for a three-year contract instead of a one-year contract. These are the people that come in... contract instead of a one-year contract, these are the people that come in and through a bunch of financial things that we provide to them, get some money back for the county, and their billings are usually around, I'm trying to find the number here, I'm not seeing it right here, seems like it's probably around four, five thousand dollars.
It says $4,125.
There you go, that's what I was looking for. But they bring in more than that, about double that.
They save us money in the.
Yep, they do. And we've been doing one-year contracts with them, so there's really no change in there, they didn't say anything about the cost being anymore, just say the annual fee is not changing from the prior three-year contract, so we already were in a three-year contract before.
Okay, so basically, we're renewing our three-year contract.
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion to renew our three-year contract with Cost Advisory Services.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Three-year contract. Well, I think we can run through our committee reports at this point.
Hey Ken, can you hear me? I'm just going to ask him if he can hear on his mic any better while he, can you hear any better today? Peggy has a different mic hooked up, and just wondering if it's.
Everybody's coming through loud and clear.
Awesome.
That's great. Good work on the mic.
Okay, I believe the only meeting I had this week was with Dave Minikas from neuroengineering, we went out to landfill, drove around there, looked it all over, he sent off a letter then to the DNR stating what we're doing out there, and that everything looks good, so.
And what day was that?
That was Monday afternoon.
Okay.
Except for the two coyotes we seen out there, two coyote pups, yeah, living in one of the pipes.
Living the dream.
Yeah, living the dream.
Living the dream at the double.
Yeah.
I didn't have any meetings, but I did have an email, I'll let you know Peggy, down in Eldora.
Central Eldora Juvenile?
Yeah, the juvenile detention board will, their audit will be coming to us, so we'll have to accept that, like we have accepted, put it on that we accepted it, so that they have a record of it, so as soon as it's made available, we'll get that and make, put that into the.
Okay, I had a White House conference call on Wednesday the 10th, I was just trying to find her name, I don't know, I can never remember her last name, first name, Barbara, the gal that's in charge of the, with the Vice President, and he was on the call, but it's a document, I always wear it.
The scarf lady?
Yeah, I can't, I don't know why I can't say her name, but anyway, she is very, very concerned with, the outbreaks have already increased since Memorial Day, and now with all the protesting and everything, and people not social distancing, not wearing masks, so she just wanted to make sure that all the government officials were recommending face covering throughout their local areas, no matter what's going on, you know, the movie theaters are opening up, restaurants, bars, of course, you can't eat and drink with a mask on, but she just wanted to reiterate, we all need to be smart with social distancing and face covering, now that everything is opening up more and more, she's very concerned. And then, there was a Maple call on Thursday, they, it's more or less talked more again about this stuff, but let's talk about the White House. That's all I had.
I didn't have anything official, I didn't put a call into John, but he was out last week, so. Men American, if you've read the thing, the email from Randy, and I think I forwarded some of it to you, Men American and the AG zoning, AG 1 and AG 2, they would like to add a clause in there for switching stations, substations. It, some people say we don't get any money, but we do, the money, the taxes that they collect from Men American goes to the state, but the state sends some back to us, so round about way, we do get paid for all the poles and wire and everything, and this would be no different, and it wouldn't be any change in anything. I looked through the ordinances, I didn't see anything on it, I put a call into John, and I'd forwarded this stuff to him before, and I forwarded it to him again, see if we can figure out anything, if we, what the legal term is, to go ahead and do that. I don't see nothing wrong with it, they want to put a switching station east of town, just east of the tower, the way I understand it.
Well, and because Dave brought that up, Randy did send us that information, he had an email, and so certainly that piece helped it out succinctly, because what Dave's comments were, so I think to look through it, and I believe, just double check that, because Randy's gone most of this week, and he wanted to give us this information, but he would be more than happy to be at next week's meeting for any sort of discussion, that would you, I mean.
It's got to be approved by us before it can be.
And he just had, you know, was bringing that to the attention of, you know, so I say, I think maybe the best thing is to make sure you read through Randy's letter explanation, and then, I'm guessing he'll probably be here next week.
It has to be approved by us, is the order of the judge.
Or the supervisor. In order to change the content, it has to be through the supervisor.
That's what I understand.
That's all we have to do, is that switching station, electrician stations.
Switch the terminology.
But isn't there something about being commercial though too? You hide the advertising something?
Well, right now, they're considered commercial, but it's not going to change the way the taxes are, it's not going to change the tax or anything like that, in fact, we would get more tax from it, because they've got more equipment in there. They're taxed on every pole, every wire, everything, and substations and all that is taxed.
Okay.
That goes to the state, the state sends it back to us.
Okay.
So it's not going to change no matter what zone it is.
Okay.
And that's my question, because if it's commercial, it's taxed at a different rate than agriculture, but this would not change.
Okay.
I was, yeah, read Randy's letter, and I think he can.
Yep, saying that last time.
On Thursday the 11th, I had a special decategorization board conference call, maybe what it was called, that was Thursday afternoon, decategorization conference call, we had to discuss some urgent business, so that is my official meeting from last week.
One other thing, I just had a conversation with Scott Kern on that thing with Murphy Tower.
Yeah, the construction units.
And he passed the buck back to John, he wants John to send him a letter first.
Okay.
And see, so I spoke with John this morning, he's going to send him off a letter, and then if we don't get any response then, then Scott says he'll turn it into the insurance, and have the insurance, talk to their insurance company, so that's about that.
Well, good, that's kind of the thought process on it.
Yeah.
Good.
So, that's about it.
Anyone else?
I have one question.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm curious, and I'm not trying to put my nose in anything, but with Dave retiring, I'm just, when are we going to, so that we have, whoever, the hiring process, that person has enough time to work with Dave to see what he does, I just want to.
You had told, you had told me to start advertising in June with the election and everything, I hadn't had the time to put a, something, an ad in the paper, so we'll be looking for that to be, I'll have you approve the ad first next week if we put it in the paper.
Well, I just want to make sure, whatever, he's the first part of August.
Well, it's the end of August, he's going to use vacation time.
Right. But we have, whenever we do the interviewing, so I just want to make sure that we have enough time to.
So we probably should have somebody hired by the first August, is what you're telling us?
Probably.
Yeah, he's on vacation, they know that the work won't be being done, so, okay.
So if she gets the ad put together, it's going to take a week or so to do some interviews, if anybody applies.
It'll take a couple weeks just to have it out there advertised, before you start getting responses.
I just don't want that Dave to creep up, Dave walks out and says, "See eye."
This is my last day, goodbye. Here's the.
Here's my barber, another manicure thing we got. Knock yourself off.
So, I, like I said, I'm not trying to stick my nose in, I just don't want him leaving without telling somebody how they, what he does, so.
Got another question for you. Do they have to have a boiler's license?
No, you can get that, there are schools they can go to.
Oh, after the pass you get.
Yeah, Dave didn't know when he came either, he went, "Oh."
He went and got some training for it.
Yeah, he goes, "A day," I think he did for a week, for a couple days for schooling.
That's good schooling.
I heard that. That's a good point, so we're going to be looking at the ad next week, then, and then get that.
Or I can send it to you, when they get it ready this week, and have you okay it, and I can get it in the paper next week.
I think we should get it in there as soon as possible.
I do too, I just don't want us to be left out, because if you have a bunch of people in it that apply, you're, it's going to take some time to whittle down a bunch of people, that's my opinion.
Yeah. Next week.
Well, today's 15th, so 22nd, 29th.
It will be the 10th of July to get into.
You said.
Sometimes they do 30 days.
Then you've got to have two, got to have at least two weeks.
As long as you've got it to it by next Monday.
Ten days of them following around.
Gotta be by noon on Monday.
Whatever works for you.
Yeah, you better get it out there.
Anything else?
Got anything Peggy?
No.
Motion through here.
Thanks for the mic, it seemed to help.
Second. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All of us in favor?